Proverbs chapter 9, verse 12 teaches us that fear of the Lord is a beginning of all wisdom, and knowledge of God is a path to understanding. I believe and I know our PM to be a God-fearing man, and having followed the town hall meetings and his remarks at previous meetings, what has struck me is that he has always underscored the spiritual importance of the work which the Dominica Labour Party government is doing under his leadership, reminding us that the DLP is establishing a comprehensive policy and programmatic framework to facilitate our sustainable development, not just due to our socialist democratic principles as enshrined in our constitution, but as part of our Christian and moral duty to care for the weak, to care for the sick and disabled, to ensure shelter for those without a roof over their heads. In other words, ladies and gentlemen, to be our brother's keeper. And what this says to us Dominicans is that the work of this Dominica Labour Party administration transcends politics, ladies and gentlemen. I am convinced that it is because of our PM’s deep belief in God and his profound understanding of the roles and responsibility of a government that he continues to consistently make wise decisions that have led us on a path to a period of unprecedented development in the Commonwealth of Dominica, ladies and gentlemen. And so I am elated to welcome you to this momentous occasion. This opportunity for all those present and those able to follow the proceedings via mass media and the social media to develop a keen understanding of the policy, programs, and initiatives of the Dominica Labour Party which continue to touch the lives of Dominicans throughout the Roseau South and across our motherland. Moreover, it is an opportunity for you, the residents of the Roseau South, to ask pertinent questions as it relates to our development in the Roseau South constituency. And so in welcoming you, I think this is an event that will leave us all with a positive outcome, with an increased understanding and a positive outlook for the development in the Roseau South. So once again, I welcome you to the Roseau South, the third largest constituency in the Commonwealth of Dominica. I welcome you to the Roseau South, a constituency with one of the largest populations and the most widest variation in terms of our socio-economic backgrounds. I welcome you to the Roseau South where we were severely impacted by tropical storm Erika. And I really want to thank all of those who are here in our midst who volunteered after the passage of tropical storm Erika and say that we need to give you a round of applause for your voluntary effort during that time. We were devastated after tropical storm Erika. Our road network was in shambles, many of our housing developments were under pressure, some individuals even lost their very shelter. But the Dominica Labour Party administration, under the leadership of the Honourable Roosevelt Skerritt, was there with us every step of the way to ride us through that storm, take us through that storm, and take us now into a period where we see life is returning to normal. And it didn’t just happen like that by a snap of a finger. How many of us remember the damage to the roads in Geodel and Egliston after tropical storm Erika? In Kingsill and in Lower Castle Comfort? Our Prime Minister allocated some 1.6 million dollars, 1.6 million dollars towards rehabilitation works to take place in the constituency to bring us back to a greater level of normalcy, bring us as close back to what we had before tropical storm Erika as was possible. And we saw road edge reinstatement in Castle Comfort, we saw road edge reinstatement in Geodel and Egliston, and also in Kingsill, we saw the introduction of several retaining walls. So from since the passage of tropical storm Erika, we have been seen in a very big way, in a very tangible way, that this Dominica Labour Party administration is committed and concerned about the livelihoods of the people in the Roseau South constituency. And we are very proud of that, and we want to say to our government, we thank you for that support and your presence here in the Roseau South. Ladies and gentlemen, with so many concerns, challenges, and opportunities within the Roseau South, it requires a focused approach. It requires a focused approach to claim to be addressing any of the issues affecting our residents. And so that is why I’m so thankful that we are blessed with a Dominica Labour Party government that has exactly the comprehensive policy and programmatic framework that we need to treat with our many concerns and challenges. Let’s consider, for example, in the 21st century, when not even a young child going to primary school would feel comfortable without a cellular phone. What would we feel like as an adult to be living in a home without the convenience of a washroom facility, brothers and sisters? And so I am very proud of our Dominica Labour Party administration for pushing the sanitation program and for making sure that the sanitation program can touch the lives of the people of the Roseau South constituency, brothers and sisters. Because there are many of us, many of us who are still in need of such facilities within our homes, or if not in our homes, we are aware of a neighbour or a relative that is in need of such a facility. But thus far, we have seen that the Prime Minister is committed to keeping his promise to eradicate pit latrines in Dominica and in the Roseau South by the end of 2017. Because as we speak, funds are being spent to provide some 42 washrooms for families in the community of Kingsill, brothers and sisters, to ensure that they have an increased and improved quality of life. As we speak, brothers and sisters, over 20 washrooms are being constructed in the communities of Geodel and Egliston to ensure that the families that are in need from those communities will have a better quality of life. They will have the convenience at night instead of going out and having to use the pit latrines. So we are very thankful and grateful to see the sanitation program is touching the lives of citizens in the Roseau South. But those of you from communities that I have not mentioned as yet, I want to say to you, keep the faith and hold strong. Because as we speak, work has been going on in your communities, and here I’m speaking of communities such as Lubia, communities such as Newtown, Fortney, and Sitsonia, to do the necessary assessment, to identify the individuals with those needs. And we are taking time to make sure that we don’t overlook any individual case. That is to say, the opportunity is still open. If you know anyone who has such a need, please inform us so that we can ensure when we provide the Prime Minister with the list of people who are in need of a washroom facility from Newtown, from Lubia, from Baffestate and other environments, and other communities rather, that we can have a comprehensive list. And so we can know at the end of 2017, no one in the Roseau South will have a pit latrine anymore, brothers and sisters. With such a large constituency and such a large population, education is critical. Education is critical for us in the Roseau South so that we can empower ourselves to rise up out of poverty which still exists in many pockets within our constituency. And so I want to say to you that this Dominica Labour Party government is the only government that has demonstrated such a profound commitment to the education of each and every citizen in this country. And we see it through their actions, brothers and sisters. We see it through the establishment of the new Newtown primary school, our venue for this evening’s meeting. In fact, some of us may be aware that this school was promised to our Honourable Prime Minister to be placed in his constituency. But again, he showed that level of selflessness that we expect of a leader. And he saw the need, the urgent need for the improvement to the school in Newtown. And two years later, we have a brand-new Newtown primary school right here in the community of Newtown, in the Roseau South constituency. So we thank the Prime Minister for that sacrifice, and we want to say to him that we’ll continue to do our best, picking up where Miss Williams left off, to make sure that our students from Newtown and environs continue to excel and be the best in terms of our human resource product in the Commonwealth of Dominica. But beyond that, brothers and sisters, we know that this Labour Party administration is focused on education, not just at the later stages, not just at the primary stage or the tertiary stage. But this government has invested heavily in early childhood education. Just consider our surroundings, the number of preschools that are located in Newtown. To my left, we have the Ginger Preschool. To my front, we have the Charlotte Preschool, Nursery School. We have another school lower down the road leading up from the Newtown savanna. We have to focus a lot of our attention on education in the Roseau South. And I want to thank the Honourable Peter Searjah for being a true friend and champion of the Roseau South. Because he always ensures, he always ensures that whatever the Ministry of Education is making available to students in this country, the Roseau South will have its fair share. And here I’m speaking of uniforms. We know we are at the end of a school year, and one of the things that every student looks forward to once it is possible in September, not necessarily going back to school, but to put on that brand-new uniform, that new school shirt, that new school shoe, and go to school with a sense of pride. And I want to, on behalf of the parents that have received in the past and those that will receive this year, Honourable Searjah, thank you and your ministry for your support to the parents in making sure their students can go to school feeling proud. Beyond that, brothers and sisters, we know that the Education Trust Fund continues to play a major role in helping the less fortunate to obtain an education. And as we speak, many parents are approaching the Ministry of Education for the school transfer grant, for transportation assistance, and other forms of assistance. And I can assure you that with the Honourable Peter Searjah as our Minister of Education, we will get our fair share of this assistance in the Roseau South. I encourage you to go to the Science and Technology Building, obtain the requisite forms, and let’s assist our people the best we can. Brothers and sisters, this Labour Party has made the policy pronouncement that there will be a university graduate in every household in the Commonwealth of Dominica. And rather than just speaking it, this Labour Party administration has been working hard towards achieving it, providing scholarships at the tertiary level for students across the Roseau South. In fact, in the past two years, I can inform you that scholarships have been awarded to students from the Roseau South to pursue studies in the People’s Republic of China and also more recently in Cuba. And at this time, ladies and gentlemen, it gives me great pleasure to inform you that this is just the tip of the iceberg. There are new opportunities in India, there are new opportunities in Morocco. And ladies and gentlemen, at this time, let us acknowledge the presence of the Honourable Prime Minister Roosevelt Skerritt and Mrs. Skerritt joining us here this evening. Let’s give them a big Roseau South welcome. Let’s make some noise for our PM. Let’s make him know we cherish him here in the Roseau South. Roseau South, are you happy to see your PM here tonight? And we are even more blessed because we have the lovely Mrs. Skerritt with us. Let’s put our hands together for brothers and sisters. Let’s just give it a second to sink in. I know the star power of our PM is really magnificent. But back to education, because it’s under the leadership of our Prime Minister that we have seen a larger population of Dominicans able to obtain education at the tertiary level. Before the establishment of the State College, less than 10% of high school graduates would go to tertiary-level institutions in the Commonwealth of Dominica. But as we speak, the Dominica State College can accommodate every single high school graduate once they meet the minimum requirements for entry, brothers and sisters. And this is a significant achievement under the leadership of the Honourable Roosevelt Skerritt, brothers and sisters. As we know, the Roseau South is known for its exemplary and legendary sportsmen. And so sports and women, thank you there, so I know that netball is very dear to your heart. And so of course our women cannot be left out. But sportsmen and women have been excelling in the Roseau South. And so sports is also of critical importance to us in the Roseau South constituency. I can inform us here tonight that we have conducted an assessment of all of our playing fields within the Roseau South constituency. That will include the Kingsill playing field, the Newtown savanna, the Lubia playing field, the Geodel playing field, Egliston playing field, Injuri Park, and all other playing fields. With a view to identify, Baffestate playing field as well. With a view to identify the needed upgrades on the respective playing fields. And this, we are pursuing the respective improvements in consultation with the Ministry of Youth and Constituency Empowerment with a view to treat with the different needs as much as is possible. And at this stage, I can inform you that those of us from Lubia who have been waiting now for quite some time will have to wait no longer because the Ministry of Youth and Sports has provided the final amount of resources we needed to install the playing field lights in the community of Lubia. So the footballers, the cricketers, and the sportsmen and women of Lubia can look forward to playing sports on a well-lit field in the coming weeks, ladies and gentlemen. The contract has already been signed and the contractor has already begun his work. It would be remiss of me here if in saying that I didn’t also acknowledge the significant contribution from the Dominica Lottery Commission towards helping us procure the much-needed lights. So the Lottery Commission helped us to procure the lights, and the Ministry of Youth is now helping us to install them. Besides that, I can inform our people of Egliston, who I see here with us in solidarity, that your playing field, I know it was significantly affected after tropical storm Erika. But just two weeks ago, myself along with your chairman, Mr. Ashworth Williams, and the chairman of the Pavilion Improvement Committee, we made a visit to that playing field and we did an assessment in terms of how much it would cost to grade the playing field and also to grass the playing field. So we’ll be treating with this as soon as is possible, providing the estimates that we have compiled to the Ministry of Sports. And we’ll be undertaking similar works for every other playing field. Because academics is important, but unless we have a balance where sports is involved, we cannot have that healthy lifestyle we need to be healthy. And we all know health is wealth. Now, employment is a challenge the world over. And with such a large population, you will expect that there are many persons seeking employment in the Roseau South constituency. We can all take hope and take that sense of opportunity thanks to the vision of our Prime Minister in establishing the National Employment Program back in 2013, ladies and gentlemen. This is a program that touches lives across Dominica. The Roseau South is no exception. In 2014, we had a cadre of some 50 young people engaged under the NEP from the Roseau South. But at the start of this year, we saw that number increase with the addition of 15 individuals to undertake beautification in the community of Geodel. And I really want to commend the members of the Beautification Team in Geodel Egliston for doing such a lovely job. We know that Geodel Egliston is the flower basket of the constituency, but it also needs to be maintained. We need to see that beauty, and I thank them for the work they are doing. Besides that, brothers and sisters, we saw a cadre of some 15 young people get employed under the NEP in the private sector and in the public sector. We say we always look out for our youth, but we need to give them the opportunity to exceed, to succeed, and to excel. And so I was very happy to see that six youth out of that second group of 15 are now working at the Youth Development Division, developing skills as youth officers that they can then pass on and bring to bear in communities across the country. Brothers and sisters, in respect to the NEP, I am very pleased to inform you that by the end of this month, an additional 50 young people from the Roseau South constituency will be engaged through the NEP that will bring our number well in excess of 100. So it says to us that we in the Roseau South are no exception when it comes to the policies of the Dominica Labour Party. It’s up to us to look out for our people, to identify those that want the opportunities and to make sure they receive it and they benefit from programs such as the National Employment Program. So I want to thank the Minister of Employment here this evening, and I think we should give him a round of applause for the support that the NEP is giving us here in the Roseau South. But just a note of caution as we move on from the NEP. The NEP is a good opportunity for every Dominican to develop experience and to gain income. But the government can help you insofar as getting the opportunity. It’s up to you, brothers and sisters, to keep that opportunity. And so I want to say to those of you who are presently engaged under the NEP, keep putting your best foot forward. And to those of you in the group of 50 that will be engaged this month, put your best foot forward and earn that job so that it will even take you further than you had ever expected. Now, many of us have had to travel long distances to make it here this evening. And depending on which hamlet in the Roseau South you came from, the ride may have been more bumpy than others. I know in particular our friends from Geodel and Egliston and my community of Kingsill, the challenge is very, very acute. I want to say to you that your government, your cabinet, and our leader are very much aware of the needs of the Roseau South with respect to roads, okay? And they are taking them very seriously. Permit me just to inform you of what is taking place behind the scenes that some of us may not be aware of. As part of our government’s Community Road Enhancement Program, we have completed estimates for many of the secondary roads throughout the constituency. No community has been left out. And we have submitted to the Office of the Prime Minister a dossier including estimates for the respective roads totaling to over 4.1 million dollars. So that gives you an idea as to the amount of work we are doing on the ground in terms of being ready whenever resources are available to treat with the road situation in Roseau South. In Kingsill, I know that the main roads are concerned. I can inform you that we have completed estimates for every major road in Kingsill. Mon Bruce, Centre Street, Back Street, and as you will be aware, we also completed Melville Batway recently with help from the Ministry of Youth and Sports. So roads is very much in focus in the Roseau South. Our people of Emsall, we know that you suffer a lot of hardship, especially since the passage of tropical storm Erika. The Dead End Bridge, which was your alternative entry point to your community, was washed away by the storm, okay? And so it left you with one, only one access and exit point to your community. And here we’re speaking of the road from the University of the West Indies. But as we speak, I can inform you that contracts have been signed for the construction of the road, the completion of the road from the University of the West Indies all the way leading into the community. And so the people of Emsall will see significant improvement to their roads very soon. Also, due to the fact that the Dead End Bridge was installed, during any heavy rains, there would be a lot of debris building up and leading the water into the community of Baffestate. Thankfully, the Ministry of Public Works has responded to a request from residents in that area, and they have since removed the bridge. So presently, if any heavy rains were to fall, the water would run along its natural course and would not fall into the dead-end area, resulting in the damage that we saw in the Dead End area and the Paradise Valley area in Baffestate. So this is a government that is responding to the needs in a very progressive manner and in a comprehensive manner, ladies and gentlemen. Moving on from roads to focus on small business development, because I mention employment and the NEP. But we know that there is no government in this earth that can employ all of its citizens, okay? Furthermore, the International Labour Organization tells us it’s three times more difficult for young people to obtain jobs than it is for adults. So we need to pay special attention to small business development in the Roseau South. Just look at the number of businesses we have, from the Newtown savanna to the Castle Comfort gas station. Many businesses, we have retails, retail shops, we have bars, we have seamstresses at work, we have fishermen, there are a number of SMEs right here within the Newtown, Fortney, and Sitsonia area and indeed for the Roseau South constituency. But I want to say to you, I want to say to you that this government is committed to empowering our small business owners. And as we can see through the recent activity and announcements of our Prime Minister, he is making sure that the resources can touch the lives of all of our entrepreneurs in the Roseau South. Whether you are from Baffestate, where we can see the emergence of several new businesses in Baffestate, including the very popular car wash. I myself plan to visit there and patronize very soon. Also in communities such as Lubia, we see that a cadre of small entrepreneurs have benefited from assistance very recently. And I can say to you that last week Friday, I went to Mr. Jack’s Steamfish Bar and I had a very lovely steam fish. And you can see that this young man is putting the resources that the government has given him to very, very good use, and we must commend this, ladies and gentlemen. Because oftentimes we like to say that the government is just throwing money at the problem, but that is not true. This government is making sure in a systematic way, in an organized way, that we can assist our entrepreneurs and follow through with them to make sure that they put the resources to good use. Right here in the community of Newtown at this very school several weeks ago, the Prime Minister gave an unprecedented commitment of half a million dollars to the entrepreneurs of the community of Newtown, brothers and sisters. This demonstrates, this demonstrates that the Prime Minister has the Roseau South very much at heart because nobody asked him to come here, nobody asked him to make that pronouncement. But he did it because he’s aware of the need and able to respond to them, brothers and sisters. So I want to say to every young person now, and even those of us who are in our senior years but think that we can still contribute to the economy through the establishment of a business. I challenge you to obtain the small business form, fill it out, and send it into the Ministry of Commerce. Let us create jobs for ourselves, let us create livelihoods for ourselves, let us create livelihoods for our brothers and sisters who we can employ at our businesses, brothers and sisters. This government is a government that cares, not just for the young, because you might realize that many of the programs I spoke to previously focus on the young people. But our Prime Minister also cares very much about the old and those senior citizens who have given years of sacrifice, years of sacrifice to this country. And that is why he introduced the Non-Contributory Pension Assistance Program or POLICY, brothers and sisters, to make sure that every citizen over the age of 70, whether or not you were able to pay social security during the time that you were employed, you are able to obtain a minimum benefit of $300 a month, brothers and sisters, to help to meet their daily needs. How many of us, how many of us with elderly relatives can afford to give them that extra boost at the end of the month? How many of us can afford to give them that $50, that $20 they need to buy their medicine, brothers and sisters? This is where this assistance comes in so meaningfully. And I want to say that I can see it touching the lives of the elderly across this constituency. When I visit there, when I see them saying, “Please tell the Prime Minister thank you for that assistance. Is that that I can use to buy my cylinder? Is that that I can use to buy my medicine?” Prime Minister, I want to say to you, thank you for the assistance that you are giving to the elderly in the Roseau South constituency. I said earlier that the work of the Labour Party comes from a spiritual origin. It doesn’t take a government, and shouldn’t take a government, to care after our loved ones, our mothers and our fathers. But unfortunately, some of us still neglect our mothers and fathers, our elderly relatives. But thanks to the vision of the Honourable Roosevelt Skerritt in the Commonwealth of Dominica, I’m not sure if there is such a program anywhere else in the world, but in the Commonwealth of Dominica, we have the Yes We Care program. And it has been a solid affirmation to our elderly, those undergoing challenges that, yes, we do care about you and we’ll reach out to you in everywhere we can. And in the Roseau South constituency, we have over 13 beneficiaries of the Yes We Care program. And I really want to thank the Ministry of Social Services for making sure that these individuals and their families benefit from the Yes We Care program, brothers and sisters. Leadership is everything, and our Prime Minister continues to demonstrate exemplary leadership. But he also challenges us as citizens to take up leadership roles at the local level. And so we can all be aware, in the Roseau South constituency, we have three major local authorities: the Roseau City Council, the Lubia Village Council, and the Geodel Egliston Village Council. And in the past two years, the Dominica Labour Party administration has been empowering our local authorities to undertake development activities throughout this constituency. In 2016, the Prime Minister made some $80,000 available to the Geodel Egliston Village Council, 60 of which were used to do road repairs and $20,000 was used to host the annual Geodel Egliston Flower Show. And I can say to you that the work on the ground was really positive in areas such as Lillett, in Geodel, and in the Clark Road in Egliston, brothers and sisters, in the Paul Road, sorry, the Paul Road in Egliston, okay? Beyond that, just recently at the start of this year, we saw some $500,000 over $500,000 placed at the Roseau City Council for washrooms to be installed in the community of Kingsill. Brothers and sisters, we need to lead at the local level. We cannot expect it to only be up to our cabinet, only up to our elected officials to facilitate the development of this country. Let us answer that call to take up a leadership role at the PTA, at the community group. Let us answer that call to take up a leadership role at the PTA, at the community groups, okay? And let's make a difference on the ground in this constituency, brothers and sisters. One of the most far-reaching challenges in the Roseau South is housing. Throwing a million dollars at the housing situation in Roseau South is like throwing a drop of water into the ocean behind us. And that's the sentiment you get when you go on the ground. But I want to say to you that this government is insistent on treating with your needs with respect to housing in a very clear and comprehensive manner. We want to transition away from the time of, I need a window, look the invoice. We want to do things properly. As you have heard our Prime Minister make the pronouncement, it makes no sense to give a man half a window, to think that you're going to protect him from the wind. Don't make sense to give a man half a roof, thinking you're going to protect him from the hurricanes. So we need to do the requisite assessments and find out the true extent of the problem and treat with those that we can in a systematic way. Those that we cannot deal with upfront, we must inform the resident that, you know, it will take a little time and see how best we can support them in the meantime. But to say to you that as we speak, there is a programme for housing assessments taking place in the Roseau South constituency, such that any individual that is in need of housing assistance will direct staff from the Ministry of Housing. I want to thank the staff of the Ministry of Housing for really being on the ground throughout this constituency, doing the assessments in Egliston, in Kingsville, in Newtown and throughout the constituency. And once that assessment is done, then we will also have the preparation of some estimates for the repairs that need to be done. And based on that, we will treat with the emergency cases first and then, based on the discretion of the Ministry of Housing, we will treat with as many cases as we can. Sadly, we will never be in a position to treat with all of the cases at one particular time. So I really want to ask for your indulgence and patience as we go about trying to improve the way we do things here in the Roseau South and indeed across the country. Now, I've been speaking to many concerns that are resonating at the constituency level, at the community level. But inevitably, as we go through life, there will be personal challenges that we endure. And at times we may be reaching out to our relatives, our neighbours, but they may not be in a position to help us at the time. Thankfully, our Prime Minister and the Cabinet have the compassion and the foresight to establish the Public Support Programme, a programme that has received a lot of criticisms, not constructive. But I want to place on record my full support and my full gratitude for this Public Support Programme introduced by the Dominica Labour Party administration. Because I cannot imagine what it would be like for some of our families if this programme was not in place. When your relative is sick and in need of emergency attention, what can you say to them? Let me bring that by Ministry of Social Services, we'll follow up with you in three weeks, hope they survive in the meantime. That's unacceptable. We must try to create avenues by which we can ensure we can deal with the concerns, the emergencies as they arise. So I want to thank the Cabinet and to thank the Prime Minister for continuing with the Public Support Programme, brothers and sisters. And in the Roseau South, we should say an additional thank you, because as we speak, the Prime Minister has ensured that in the decentralisation of this programme, the Roseau South was not overlooked, brothers and sisters. As we speak, just a few metres away from us is a satellite office of the Public Support Programme, at which any of us, any citizen, not just from the Roseau South but from Sufraya and neighbouring constituencies can come and in a confidential way, in a professional way, raise their issue to the Government of Dominica and be in a position to benefit. And I can say to you that this office has been there for less than two months, and over two dozen citizens of the Roseau South constituency have brought their concerns and seen their concerns dealt with at this office. So I want to thank the Prime Minister for bringing this office to the Roseau South. It is touching the lives of people in the Roseau South. Brothers and sisters, the task of building a nation does not rest with the government. And this Labour Party administration has tried to voice that sentiment even from our manifesto, building a prosperous and peaceful and just society and ensuring that we all understand the importance of nation building. How many of us were in attendance on one of the volunteer days in the Botanical Gardens during that project? How many of us either passed through in solidarity? A few of us are here. This was such a remarkable experience. And again, it demonstrates the leadership of our Prime Minister, because the government will never have all the resources to deal with all of the development needs in the country. But sometimes, if we look even within our community, as we probably used to do more in the past, we have the assets, we have the human resource, we have the capability to facilitate development at the local level. And so if we can, we have no excuse for not doing that, brothers and sisters. And so what struck me the most about this project in the Botanical Gardens is that it is something that we can replicate in the communities across the Roseau South constituency. And so in closing, I want to say to you that all of which this government has done is simply a demonstration of its concern and commitment to you, the people of the Roseau South constituency. Yet still, it cannot do it alone. And so I want to encourage you all to recommit yourself to the process of nation building. Let's recommit ourselves to give up the little that we have to make the greater cause succeed. Brothers and sisters, Dominica and the Roseau South is us to develop, us to develop, sorry. And I can say to you that I am committed to lending my services, my time and my ideas, intellect, learning together to see how we can build this constituency, how we can build this country together, brothers and sisters. And so on that note, I want to say to you, thanks for coming and give you a warm Roseau South welcome to this evening's town hall meeting. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Here we are bringing the message to you in the Roseau South constituency to update you, of course, on our plans and programmes, and most importantly, of course, to hear from you. Because why do you think it's important that we come and update you, let you know what we've been doing? But we also think it's also even more important to hear from you, to hear your ideas, of course, your constructive criticism. Because we've always said that we at the Cabinet level and the government level, we cannot think of everything. And you'd be surprised at some of the bright ideas that would come from the audience and from you, the ordinary Joe Brown on the street. Of course, we are in a pre-budget period, and I want to borrow a phrase or an idea from the Honourable Reginald Oshry. In fact, I was tuned into the Next Level Programme on Saturday evening, and I heard the Honourable Oshry calling the programme, and he said that that's the very first time in the history of Dominica that we have seen so much continue to happen in a pre-budget period. And I think this is noteworthy, Honourable Oshry, and while maybe much wasn't made of it, we still see so many things happening in this period. Road rehabilitation all around the country, washroom programme continues, small business, the national employment programme. And in fact, just two or three days ago, I witnessed the handing over of free boats, brand-new fishing boats and engines to free fishermen in the Lubia community. And I want to thank the Honourable Jaisa Ben-War for his service, because even if he's not the elected member of parliament, he thinks that his work in the constituency, the Roseau South constituency, is commendable. And we need to really put our hands together for him. Because as a young man in politics, I know it's not easy, the pressures are many, this is a young man who would have gone out to educate himself, and he could have come back and settled down in an eight-to-four job like most of us. Instead, he has chosen to make this great sacrifice to be your caretaker in a constituency as diverse and large and very difficult as the Roseau South constituency. So I say that to let you know that you should have a lot of patience with him, help him, those of us, those of us who think we are more experienced on the political scene, help him, talk to him. And I'm pretty sure that we will see him grow from strength to strength, and I think he has a proper start already. And if his presentation tonight is any indication of what this man is made up, we can look for Jaisa here for many, many, many more years to come in a political sense. So I'm here tonight to speak very briefly, Honourable Jaisa. There's very little I can say after listening to the Honourable Senator, but just to give a brief account of my stewardship as the Minister of Health and Environment. Of course, after the 2014 general elections, Yostuli was very humbled to be given the reins to be chosen to lead the health sector of Dominica. And I think it's just, I think it will be remiss of me if I don't spend a few minutes just to give a brief account of my stewardship thus far. Of course, we know that the health, they always say that the health of a nation is the wealth of a nation, so it's a very important sector that Yostuli was chosen to lead. And we can't speak about health without talking about the new national hospital, a 48 million US dollar project, a gift from our friends, the People's Republic of China. And I think we need to put our hands together for these people. Because, because in addition to so many things that they have done, and right to my immediate back is another indication, another visible and tangible sign of the friendship and the cooperation of the People's Republic of China to the Commonwealth of Dominica. And of course, this hospital, much has been said about it even prior to it, prior to the start of construction of this new hospital, we saw so many things, calipso's being composed on this new hospital, posted on Facebook about the old PMH, and Papa Boji, I tell people, I mean, I mean, how can you be a bona fide Dominican and you go about the current Princess Margaret Hospital and take off pictures of the hospital and post on the backyard, the storeroom area and post on social media for the world to see? We know that the PMH is in a very deplorable condition, this is why Papa Boji will be leading the hospital. So I'm, so I'm hoping, and I'm really hoping that the very same people who were the ones posting the scenes of the old PMH right now, that they are right now posting on a weekly basis, the progress that we are making, because progress is happening at the Goodwill Site. And we want to thank our Chinese counterparts, the Chinese construction company, for the progress that they're making on the hospital. And we're hoping that come October of this year, that the first phase of the hospital will be completed, and we'll have a brand-new accident and emergency department, what we refer to as a casualty, and also a brand-new radiology and lab etc. section. So come October, we are going to turn the keys and commission the first phase of this hospital. And we have no doubt, we have no doubt, especially the fact that the construction, the Chinese construction firm is the one engaged that come at the end of the 30 months stipulated by the contract, that we will have a brand-new hospital, complete and ready for use. So we continue with the project, and as I said, good progress in addition to the new building, I'm spanking the building as my friend Ian D from Portmour like to see. We also will have new equipment, equipment that we never, ever had before in Dominica, an MRI, this is stuff that we would have had to go overseas to do prior to this administration and Disney Hospital, a high-frequency ultrasound to treat cancers, tumours, etc. We are also undergoing a very rigorous training exercise at the Ministry of Health. We are currently, we have over a dozen of our sons and daughters being engaged, being specialised, or specialised in rather, in new services, oncology, nephrology, you just name it. So in addition to the new building, new modern equipment, we are also going to have a cadre of well-trained specialists. So we're not saying that we will take care of all your health problems, but the need to travel overseas for medical attention should be less come the completion of this new hospital. But we are also saying that all of this would be quite almost useless if the everyday Dominican cannot access these facilities and these services. And we honour the tremendous cost of healthcare, especially in small island developing states like ours, in fact, all across the world, even most of sometimes in the so-called Matri and first world countries, which is why your government, and because of the caring, and again, Senator Ben-War mentioned it, because of the nature of this government, humane and very, we reach out to the marginalised and the less fortunate. And governments before, and not just in Dominica, in the region and much more, Matri economies would have spoken of what they call national health insurance and universal health coverage, meaning that each and every individual, each and every citizen of any country would have the right to free healthcare. So while a lot have been spoken, a lot have been lots of volumes, if you go to my office, there would be books and documents dating decades ago as it puts into national health insurance. But it had to take this Roosevelt Skerritt-led administration to actually implement a national health insurance programme in Dominica. And while we take this for granted, we heard a representative from Pahu recently speak to it and speak to how impressed he was that a small island developing state such as Dominica could undertake such an initiative. Five million dollars being put to capitalise this national health insurance programme, five million dollars, and we're talking about in a post-disaster period. And this is significant, because while in a lot of other jurisdictions after a disaster, you will find government spending, I'm sorry, cutting down and spending, asking citizens to make sacrifices, here we are, this Labour Party administration, after Erica, where we lost, where we had 1.4 billion dollars' worth of damage, lost almost 100% of our GDP, here we are initiating new, new, new programmes. And we see roads being built around the island like never before, washroom programmes, support to small businesses like never before, and this is commendable. And of course, I'm sure the speakers after me will speak to the source of this funding, the much talked about CBI, and we have to thank God for the CBI programme, we have to thank God for it. Because, because after Tropical Storm Erica, when we would have come to our citizens who had to make sacrifices, who take pay cuts, etc., we haven't done that. Instead, we have seen a flurry of activity, which is why I think the point made by Reginald Oshry on the Saturday night programme is very commendable, that's the very first time in Dominica history we see so much happening, especially in a pre-budget period. But this is the Dominica Labour Party led by a very dynamic and visionary leader, the Honourable Roosevelt Skerritt, and then we will continue to look for more and more innovative ways to continue to bring development to our country. In addition, of course, to the new hospital, we also have a number of new health facilities carded in this financial year to be built at Newtown, and we'll speak to Newtown a bit later, Collyhoo, Vicard, Belleville Chopin, four new health facilities to be constructed in this new financial year. And the much talked about also, and somewhat controversial, New Mary God Hospital, which is also set to be built, this construction started in this financial year. And again, we want to thank the Mexican government for their kind donation of 5 million US dollars, 13 million EC dollars towards the construction of this hospital. And I want to announce that plans are in advanced stage, and we should see work started in this financial year. And again, we could spend the rest of the night speaking to a number of initiatives, especially initiatives assisted by our foreign friends. And a lot of this, a lot of this would be done because of the friendship that has been forged by this Labour Party administration with a number of foreign entities. We can speak to our Cuban friends, and the much also talked about, and much I can see clearly in our school programme, where all schoolchildren, both primary and secondary, are being screened and their body mass index are being taken to check on their nutritional state. And those found wanting are going to be given a new pillar of glasses, compliments the Government of Dominica. All schoolchildren within the primary and secondary school system. And we are being ably assisted by our friends from the Republic of Cuba. The Mission Milagro, where we had the first, where we had the first phase, where our patients were flown to Cuba. Right now, the Venezuelans are in Dominica, and to date, over 300 surgical interventions have been done, treating people for cataracts and what they call terigium, the growthless. Yeah, thank you for your exuberance, my lady. Over 300, and these are people that their eyesight, they had lost their sight or they were in the process of losing their eyesight. And we have a number of testimonies as to the people where the eyesight would have been partially and in some cases fully regained, and we want to thank the Bolivarian Republic of Venezuela. And this is important. It's important, especially bearing in mind the internal turmoil that Venezuela is undergoing right now. And we want to pray, we want to pray, those of us prayer warriors, for the political and economic stability of a once-great country, Venezuela. So while they continue to reach out to us in spite of the internal problem. So we will continue to help our people at the Dominica Labour Party. As I said, this is a hallmark of this administration, because the last time I checked in Dominica, we were democratically elected government by the people, of the people, and in bold letters for the people, which is why, which is why we'll continue to use the resources, whatever means we have, the CBI, whatever resources, we will continue to use it to develop you, the people of the Commonwealth of Dominica. And we make no apologies for none of our programmes. No regrets, no apologies, no apologies for helping small business. We make no apologies for the washroom programme, a programme that the opposition laughed about, but we know the importance, I don't have to go into detail, the importance of having an indoor washroom facility, and especially in the rural areas. Maybe the urban areas, the problem is not so acute, but I can tell you in some of the rural areas, the discomfort that some of, especially our senior citizens have to go through in using an outside facility. So while it might look like a very modest initiative, a washroom, what is a washroom? But to some people, it means a complete change of their life and also sanitation. We make no apologies for the national employment We make no apologies for the National Employment Program. We make no apologies for committing to rehabilitating all community roads by the end of two thousand and seventeen. Because it's your government, it's your resources, and we are spending on you. So when they call you all sorts of name, beg or whatever, tell them it is your government resources, our resources, that is being spent. Again, again, I want to commend, in closing, I want to commend Senator Jairziah Benoit. As I said earlier, a young man who went on to educate hisself people. And we want those of us more experienced, hold his hand. Hold his hand instead of trying to bring him down. Because I, because listening to him tonight, I think, me thinks that he's doing a tremendous job. None of us are perfect, all of us need help. I've been in this for seven years, and I think I need a lot of help myself. Not all of us, all of us need help, okay? He's young, but there's no denying in his exuberance, and his heart is in the right place. So hold his hand. And as I said, let us continue to pray for the success of the CBI. Run first in the Caribbean in a recent polls. So that means that we in Dominica, we are doing something good in terms of the due diligence and all of this. And let us continue to pray that, that the CBI continues to bring in much-needed resources to develop a very difficult-to-develop country like Dominica, given our topography, etc. Because our people are depending on us for more small-business assistance. There are a number of roads, we heard Jairziah Benoit mention, four point one million dollars' worth of roads in the Rosasov constituency needing rehabilitation. So we have to continue to pray for that. And the CBI program, what importantly and closer to home for me, the Pedit Savan resettlement, a project that is set to cost over one hundred million EC dollars. Where else in the world, after a disaster, would a government find that type of money to resettle over eight hundred citizens? So I've told, I've told my constituents, and I think it's very close to me because I'm from Pedit Savan, and we know what happened in Pedit Savan, Tropicana America, after my constituents, especially the few of them who like, who is aiding and abetting the opposition to talk their bitties. Bitties is part of nonsense. I was about to say, it's a stronger word, but I'm on national radio. Talk their nonsense. That when they, when they, while they're aiding and abetting to the position in talking nonsense and trying to cry on the CBI, their very survival and future depends on it. Because other than that, the government will have to tell them, well, go back to the savan and dibu your kaws. So those of you understand. So as long as God continues to bless this program, as long as God continues to bless this administration, we will continue to give back to our people. And I know God will continue to bless us, because the Bible says, Ian Douglas, "God loves a cheerful giver." So I want, in closing, I want to thank you for listening to me. I really want to wish you well, I want to wish you well, Senator Jairziah Benoit. And we, we can spend the rest of the year, the rest of our lives, talking about what happened last elections. But just to let you know, from our end, from the Labour Party end, that we are patiently awaiting the clarion call, Mr. Prime Minister, when the rule is called, when the rule is called, to welcome the Rosasov back into the Labour Party fold, back into the Labour Party family. I thank you very much.
Let me begin by saying that we need to establish first and foremost, from the very onset, that the Rosasov constituency, the par rep for this constituency is not Jairziah Benoit. The par rep for the Rosasov constituency is one and only Joshua Francis. However, listen, however, the parliamentary representative for the Rosasov, Joshua Francis, is a miserable failure. And consequently, a vacuum has been created for leadership here in Rosasov. And that is why Jairziah Benoit, a mosquito, has demonstrated to the people of Rosasov that the power of a mosquito is greater than the power of a cow. You see, because what they don't understand, a mosquito can bring a cow to his knees. And in the absence of leadership, it takes a young man, Jairziah Benoit, to fill the vacuum that has been created. And so you need to be eternally thankful to Prime Minister Roosevelt Skerritt, who always, on every turn, every decision that he takes, demonstrates wisdom, vision, and prudence. Friends, let me say to you that Dominica is not an easy place to, to run. It is not the easiest country, especially in these times, to be at the helm of leadership. And don't ask me how he does it. Those of us who sit at cabinet with him, we recognize that the only man that, in this day and this hour, can really man the ship of state in the manner that it is being done, is none other than Roosevelt Skerritt. You heard your parliamentary representative, sorry, you heard the senator. This may just be prophetic. In fact, I'm feeling it tonight. Can you feel it? You heard the senator tonight speak to the level of development that has touched the lives of you, the people of Newtown and the Rosasov. Development of sporting facilities, development or construction of washrooms, road rehabilitation, the creation of employment through the National Employment Program and other vehicles, intervention through the small business, and the list continues. You heard him speak of education in Newtown and the Rosasov. Let me say to you that education, with all of the related training, constitutes for us here, one of the most important tools for development. The Dominican Labour Party recognizes that for us to take this country forward, we must ensure that our people are fully exploited. Hence, when we took a decision to create universal access at all levels, we recognize that this was a prerequisite, a precondition for ensuring that our Dominican society becomes prosperous, that we live in a peaceful community, and that we live in a just society. In fact, Newtown is one of the shining examples of the resources that this administration has been putting towards educating our people. Right behind me is the new Newtown Primary School, a gift from the People's Republic of China. And we want to thank the People's Republic of China for assisting the people of Newtown and the Rosasov. In fact, let me say to you that the Newtown Primary School is the only primary school on island where we have a state-of-the-art I-City lab that meets CXI standards. This school could have been in Trafalgar or La Plaine or Vicars, but we took a decision, and the Prime Minister took a decision, to put this school here in Newtown to cater for the children of the Rosasov constituency. We recognize that with respect to tertiary-level education, that the number of students attaining bachelor's degrees over the last ten years has grown exponentially. Today, as a result of the investments of this government in the education of our people, Rosasov and more so the people of Newtown now have, as never before, the largest number of young people studying in universities around the world. To a very large extent, that has been achieved because of the investments that we put in developing the Dominica State College. The DSC has played a pivotal role in that regard. In fact, you will recall a few years ago when the Prime Minister made a pronouncement that we sought to have one university graduate per household. You will remember the naysayers laughing us to scorn. While we may not have achieved one hundred percent success, I give you every assurance that by 2020, every Dominican family will have not just a graduate from the state college, but a university graduate, including you, the people of Rosasov and Newtown. But all of that could not and cannot be achieved without prudent management of state resources. That is why, from the very foundational stage, and I see our teacher here, at the early childhood level, we ensure that we provide you with support to ensure that your children can do well. And you heard the senator speak of no less than four early childhood facilities in the immediate area. We ensure that parents now can send their children to these facilities, without having to think of where the next fifty dollars is coming from to pay that child's school fees. And we did this through an intervention by providing a monthly subvention to those facilities. At the primary level, we ensure that a support mechanism is put in place. We provide education support through the trust fund, by provision of textbooks, the school transportation program, and importantly, the transfer grant. And let me say to you, friends, we will ensure that this year, all of the support that we give to your children, it will continue despite the global financial climate in which we operate. If children are not provided with basic education, their ability to develop a sustainable livelihood is seriously compromised. It cannot be right that the young boys of Newtown, the young men of Rosasov, they can only resort to the sea as fishermen. We must go beyond that. And it is in recognition of this that today, we are making resources available to ensure that every young man, every child, every young woman is given an opportunity at receiving not just primary and secondary education, but that they can access the Dominica State College. And if we have to sacrifice some of our infrastructural works, the Prime Minister has given you the assurance that we will do to ensure that we provide the young people of Rosasov, Newtown, and Dominica a quality education. Ladies and gentlemen, let me say to you that we have actually spent in this last financial year no less than fifteen million EC dollars providing support to our young people to achieve an education out of state. Now, we're not talking about the monies that we are spending here in Dominica. We're speaking here of monies that we are providing to support the children of the average people of Newtown and the Rosasov to attain a university degree. Let me say to you, in addition to that, you have heard the Minister for Science and Technology speak of the millions that we have expended at the Dominica State College to develop a center of excellence. Let me call on the young people of Rosasov, since Tok Farm is within close proximity to your constituency, take advantage of the opportunities that we are creating to ensure that we can create business enterprises and new jobs in the I-City sector for the young people of this area. In addition to that, I want to, in this short time that I have here with you, to be very clear, and you heard Dr. Darrow speak to the source of funding. While over the past few weeks and months, we have focused quite a lot of attention on the CBI program, and rightly so. And I'll tell you why. Because within the Dominican society, whether they are here or out in the diaspora, there are some who have launched a stimming attack on the source of funding that we have used to generate revenue to provide for our people right here in Dominica. And so we have a responsibility, as Dominicans, to defend our future. Because an attack on our economy is an attack on the future of Dominica. So we have spent a lot of hours educating the Dominican public on why it is necessary that we must do what we are doing to sustain our people. But let me say to you that while some are seeking to destroy our economy, we have a Prime Minister, and I'm confident we have a cabinet of ministers who understand that in order for our elderly people who have made a contribution to national development to enjoy a decent living in their twilight years, we must go out there and source the requisite funding. Let me say to you, God forbid, but should the CBI program not be able to generate the kind of revenue that we now experience, friends of Rosasov, I give you every assurance that the Minister of Finance, the Prime Minister, with whom we have the pleasure of working, is endowed with wisdom, he's endowed with prudence, he's endowed with the understanding to craft some other creative way of generating revenue to take care of the people of Rosasov and Dominica. I want to end tonight, but before I leave this podium, let me say to you that while it is true, and Dr. Darrow alluded to that, that we are a government of the people, for the people, and by the people, we need to recognize that among us, there are many who do not understand that the government of Dominica is here to serve every single Dominican. This is not about labor or workers of freedom, it is about the people of Dominica. And so the people of Rosasov, who are yearning for leadership in this time and in this hour, we have a solemn responsibility to provide you with the resources, whether it be for the development of your roads, for the development of other infrastructure, or for the development of our human resource capacity, we will ensure that every man, woman, boy, and girl in Rosasov benefits from the resources of this country. However, for those who believe that Dominica belongs to the Labour Party or Dominica belongs to Roosevelt Skerritt, tonight I want to be very clear, without casting any shadow of doubt, that one- of doubt, that while Roosevelt Skerritt remains Prime Minister, and the Labor Party remains the government of the day, we will not allow anybody internally or externally to determine for us as government what is best for the people of Dominica and Rosa Salt. And that is why we are here tonight, because you have given us a clear mandate, and although Rosa Salt did not vote for the Dominica Labor Party, we are here dialoging with you when your pal rep refuses to dialogue with you. Because we recognize that residence in Rosa Salt is a wealth of knowledge, and that we want you to advise us, tell us tonight what it is that we ought to do, using the resources that this administration can and will generate for the betterment of every individual in Rosa Salt and Dominica. Ladies and gentlemen, having said this to you, let me give you the assurance that in the face of the reopening of school, the school year has come to an end, be assured that you will benefit from the uniform assistance, you will benefit from the provision of textbooks, and that the people of Rosa Salt, the children of Rosa Salt, and Newtown more specifically, shall not be left behind, because Dominica is yours, and so, the resources of Dominica belong to you, the people of Rosa Salt. Thank you very much, and God bless Dominica, and God bless the Dominica Labor Party.
I am here, and I will speak to a couple issues in Newtown and of course, the Rosasov constituency. And I also speak with you about the upcoming budget, the 2017-2018 budget. But also make certain commitments to you in Rosasov, and to say that immediately after the budget is passed, you will see some major activities taking place in the Rosasov constituency. And I believe one of the major issues confronting the entire Rosasov constituency is the condition of your roads. I lived in Monbros for many years, and it was always a challenge there. You know, you drive through the center street in Kingsville or the back road in Kingsville, there are challenges. The road to Egliston is in terrible state, from Fortney all the way to Egliston, Giroudel. So I want to say to you, my dear friends from Rosasov, that the government is committing to improving or the complete rehabilitation of the fallen roads in the Rosasov constituency. And I want you to take note, because every promise you make tonight shall be fulfilled with the help of God. We are committing to the Clark Road in Giroudel, the Monbros Road, the road in the area of the football house in Baffet State. The first phase, because we're going to be doing the Fortney Egliston Giroudel Road down to Castle Comfort in phases, because that's going to cost a lot of money. So we'll do the first phase of the Fortney Egliston Road. The center road in Kingsville from the Newtown Savanna, going all the way up to Kingsville, past Mr. Richards' home, and going up to the areas there. And the first phase of the Wall House Main Road, that is from the main road in Lali Koko there, all the way up, but we'll do it by phases, because it is costing in excess of a million dollars. So we're committing to the first half a million dollars for that road. The bypass in Castle Comfort, the Castle Comfort coming across to the main road going up to Giroudel, to Giroudel. You see, I know these areas, you know? And I've been to all of these areas. The Fifth Avenue in Madrejo commitment is also being made for this. So we're talking about eight major roads in the Rosasov constituency, which we will seek comments immediately after the passage of this year's budget. Housing continues to be a major requirement in Rosasov. And here, and tonight, we'll be speaking mainly to the Newtown people. We will be coming to Egliston, we'll be coming to Giroudel, we'll be coming to Kingsville, coming to Baffet State to have similar type town hall meeting in your respective communities. But we... Land was acquired in the Charlotte Valley some years ago, and we paid for it, and there were a few acres of land there. But planning, in the wisdom of the Minister of Housing, did an assessment of the Charlotte Valley area. And when we thought we had the opportunity to create many lots, the area where the lots are, where the land is, is highly compromised in that you have, the planning told us we should not build homes beyond the ravine that is there, because it is a potentially troublesome area. So we only left with a handful of lots before you get to the ravine. And that has compromised our ability to effect some housing solutions in that area. The cost of infrastructure from sewage from the lot to the main road was costing in excess of 600,000 dollars just to build the sewage system. To bring water to the area costs us about half a million dollars. So the cost of infrastructure is huge. And so, we've studied the situation, and we felt that it would not make sense to sell the lots individually to people so they could build, because when you do the maths, it may not make much economic sense. But we have decided in the government, and based on advice, that a couple apartment units can in fact be constructed in the Charlotte Valley. And I'm saying to you tonight, that the government is committing to construct two sets of apartments in the Charlotte Valley area. And Ambrose, you know, we have to get it done. So I haven't told you so, but I'm telling you so in the presence of the world, that I am assigning you to coordinate that on my behalf and ensure that it is done. Because, because the truth is, the truth is, I am tired about talking about Charlotte Valley. And, and something must be done, and let us get it done in this financial year. So the next time I come, I come to Newtown, I shall be visiting the apartments under construction. I give you the assurances here in Newtown, and Senator Binwa articulated the government's position in respect to housing, that my view, and that of the government, is that if somebody comes to us requesting assistance to renovate their homes, let us do a complete and decent job for them. But for us to be able to do a complete and decent job for you, we must do proper assessments. And this is why we will be sending people to you, to ensure that a proper assessment is done. So if it is a new roof you require, then a new roof we shall give to you. It makes no sense we give the people half of what the cost is, and they are unable to effect the improvements to their homes. So we will be doing that, my dear friends, and assisting families and individuals to improve their housing situation. We are committed in Newtown and the entire constituency to eradicate the presence of pit latrines in this constituency and Dominica by extension. And the Senator mentioned to you the number of washrooms that have already been approved, and funds transferred to the City Council for the construction of washrooms, and contracts were signed some months ago, and work is ongoing. So we will be completely eradicating the presence of pit latrines in the entire country. And there are some, especially in your position, who have been criticizing the government for this. That is a matter for them. Because you see, these people do not come into politics to serve people. They do not spend time with people to understand the challenges which people go through from time to time. Because when you look at the opposition, and those who made themselves available in that party to be representatives, they all came into politics looking for a job. And when you look at the Labor Party, every one of us left a comfortable job to come to represent people. That's the difference. And I've always maintained, to represent people, to represent people at whatever level, you must first love people. Politics, politics is about people. It's about working with people. It's about interacting with people. It's about listening to people, and seeing how you can help the people improve their lives, improve the lives of their family with the resources that you have. And when I hear them criticize also the Public Soul Program, I said, honestly, I do say, in my own prayer, and in repeating biblical verses, "Father forgive them for they know not what they're doing." Because these people in opposition are so blinded by the narrow understanding of politics, that they believe that it is their duty and responsibility to criticize everything that is good. Now, every single one of us in Dominica, every single family in Dominica have had one health issue within the family or another. And let's reflect on it. Many of us have gone to the credit union in the bank and take the last thousand dollars we have to provide medical care to a member of our family. Because for all of us, the health and well-being of our family is paramount, is number one. And we will do everything to ensure that we ourselves are in good health, and we'll pay for it, our children, or our siblings or relatives. And I can tell you, my dear brothers and sisters, I have had the occasion to introduce the Public Soul Program, and I have had the responsibility of overseeing the Public Soul Program. And I ask myself every time, what happened to Dominicans before we came into office? So many people may have died because they had no means, no access to government. What do you do as a Prime Minister of a country? And in your case, as the head of your own household? If somebody comes to me as Prime Minister of the country, and says that they have just been diagnosed with breast cancer, and they need some money to perform the surgery and to have post-surgery care, what do I say to the person? And it's not that we have a largesse and we don't know what to do with it. Or a situation where a couple have been married for seven, 10 years, seven to 10 years, been trying to have a baby, and on the sixth occasion, that baby happened to be born alive, because the fifth, the five previous occasions, there's been a miscarriage or some medical difficulties. And the good Lord blessed this person, this couple with her child, and the child is born with a hole in his heart, and needs 25,000 euros to go to Martinique. Now, our Dr. McIntyre was saying to me that if the child is not flown out tonight, the child will die by tomorrow morning. What do you do as Prime Minister of the country? And I am saying to Dominicans, I am saying to Dominicans, if I, as the Minister of Finance, has to borrow money to take care of the people of Dominica, to address their health cares, I will borrow money, ladies and gentlemen. Because I have seen, and I have encountered, families who have money, and they have confided in me, and say, "Look, Prime Minister, I had 300,000 dollars in the bank." And every single cent of that 300,000 dollars went into taking care of members of the family. So let us understand this thing, and understand, my dear brothers and sisters, who really have your interest at heart? Who has your back in this country? We have, we have a leader of the position, who up to this day, two years later, has not been able to understand his responsibility as the leader of the position. I mean, I said in the Parliament that I thought Hector John was the worst leader of the position Dominica had ever seen. But I believe I spoke too fast. Lennox Linton is the worst leader of the position Dominica has seen. I mean, I have never seen somebody more lazy than Lennox Linton. I mean, I mean Edison James was leader of the position, and he would do his little farming, and sell his bananas, his cocoa, and so forth. So the man sits there, abuses people on the radio, scandalizes people on the radio, and playing big butcher, putting his suit, his striped suit, and going England in Privy Council to fight a case, and then you come in Dominica and tell him, "Man, you only have 300 dollars a month." And the man, so when you do the maths, 44 years the man will take to pay. Now, Linton is about 60 years. So, I mean, the man will be older than my pampu when he will pay that money back. So, I mean, the man will be older than my pampu when he will pay that money back. Now, I will tell you before I move on. I will tell you before I move on that the case, one of the cases which the ministers brought against him, where he asked for a million dollars, I am saying to Linton tonight that when the court makes its pronouncement on how much you have to pay Roosevelt's carrot, if you don't have money, Mr. Linton, you have to go and work on my farm for me. if he's lazy, lazy, come and know what hard work is. so my friends, and in respect to the, which the promise I made here at the Newtown Primary School to Newtown in respect to small business assistance, and I made a commitment of half a million dollars. And the only reason why you have not gotten that money because administratively, we moved a little bit too late to get the money out of the system before the end of the financial year. But rest assured, as August appears and we pass the budget, ladies and gentlemen, we will start disreading the checks to you, the residents of Newtown, not Roseau South, just for Newtown, half a million dollars for Newtown alone. You understand? So we have your applications. We have your applications. All of you applied. We have gone through them and we are ready to roll immediately after the budget is passed. So the commitment is there and we shall fulfill that commitment. When I come to Eglistan and Girodel, I will speak about your program and in Baffet State, we'll talk about your program when I come to your parts in the next several weeks. And Kingsville, of course. Now, I want to say to you, the residents of Newtown and Roseau South in general, that while the Jungle Bay is being constructed in Soufri, you must also seek to take advantage of the opportunities. The opportunities which exist for jobs while the hotel is under construction, but also critically, jobs which should be available when the hotel is completed. Now, with 120 rooms, you're going to need a lot of people to provide services to these 120 rooms. But not only the direct jobs we should be mindful of. Newtown and the Roseau South constituency has a thriving fishing program taking place. And Jungle Bay alone is going to require over 60,000 pounds of fish. So we have to position ourselves to take advantage of this opportunity. The little restaurants and so forth, we need to sit down with you to see where you are and how we can improve your restaurant so that you can take advantage of the tourists which will come in into this part of Dominica. The boatmen not only fishing, but you can look at also small tours within the area with your small boats with the appropriate safety equipment. I have been speaking with the proprietors of Fort Young and I'm taking the liberty to say tonight that they will increase the number of rooms at Fort Young by 30. So we will put in some 30 additional rooms at Fort Young. And once the government gives them certain green lights, they're prepared to start. So we're talking about major developments that will take in place in our area in the south. And we must position ourselves, my dear friends from Eglistan and Girodel. We are flowers. We need to sit down with you as a group and see where we are and where we need to take you to be able to take advantage of the provision of floral arrangements, especially when you be having weddings at Jungle Bay and special events. How do we position you to, so when the hotel comes, when the hotel opens, you already at the stage where you can take advantage. So I will be coming to meet with you myself along with the Ministry of Commerce and Tourism to sit down with you to see how we can take you to that next level of being able to take full advantage of the opportunities. Because Dominica is a natural island. We have fertile soil. We have adequate rainfall. We should not be importing any flowers to Dominica. We should be able to provide all of the flowers and floral arrangements for ourselves, by ourselves. So we need to sit down with you and we'll be bringing with us the Chinese agricultural technical mission to be able to advise you on some of the techniques that we can use to really have our flowers taken to another level. My friend here, you know, he's dressed here tonight with every single thing made in Dominico. Stand up, let me see you, my brother. Made in Dominico. You know, so we have to sit with these artisans in a serious way and give them the support financially and otherwise to ensure that we can take advantage of the opportunities and not only cause Dominica to be our market, but we must see the world as our marketplace. So when the tourists come here, they should be going back with clothes made in Dominico. Souvenir items made in Dominico. That is the only way we are able to create jobs and grow the economy when we can bring in foreign exchange into Dominica. So we'll be sitting with you, my dear brothers and sisters, to ensure that we can provide you with the opportunities. We are committed, as the Minister for Health indicated, to the construction of the new health center for Newtown. And I am, I am, I am not from Newtown, but I am saying to you, ladies and gentlemen, that we must not let people mislead us in respect to our own development. That health center is too important for you, the people of Newtown. And we've been spending the last 10 years searching up and down in Newtown looking for a site to build a health center for you. And we have found the site. And every expert is telling us that a school and a health center can live close by. So let us not get too involved in emotionalism and recognize what is good for us and what we need to do to get things done that is good for us. So we are waiting to you. The government has taken a decision to build a health center. You must rally around that decision to build a health center for you, the people. Because the Newtown area is too large for us to be going all the way to Roseau to get a little bandage on little bubble we have. So I am leaving it there for the time being, but I say to you that let us not let people's vanity come in the way of what is really required for us here in Roseau South and Newtown in particular. And come back to tourism. We see the yachts coming there, but we have to place ourselves. What kind of services we can provide to the yachts here in Newtown, you know? So we'll be coming back to you. The Ministry of Tourism will come back to you. The Ministry of Trade will come back to you to sit with you, to say to you, the people of Newtown, "Look, these are the number of yachts which come to your area. How can we ensure that we don't only watch them on the sea, but how they can get the yachtsmen, the passengers onshore and take advantage of what we have to offer in Newtown?" As I said to you, very soon we'll go to the parliament to pass this year's budget. And we've had consultations with many organizations, many institutions and many individuals across Dominica. And I must say, I had some, and of course along with some of my colleagues, we had some very constructive discussions with the unions, all of the unions. We invited all of the unions to come to talk to us about what are their suggestions for the budget. We spoke to all the private sector entities, from the Builders Association to the Dominica Hotel and Tourism Association, to DIC and the Manufacturers Association. I spoke to students, the young people. I spoke to, we spoke to the Dominica Association of Teachers too. I spoke to many school teachers. I spoke to many nurses. And hearing from people, farmers, as to what are their aspirations, what are their recommendations for the government? And I must say, a lot of the discussion which we had, some of the recommendations, most of the recommendations which came from them were consistent with some of the discussions we had in the cabinet for consideration. And I would like to inform you and the people of Dominica that in this year's budget, we are providing some 15 million dollars for the manufacturers of Dominica. And that 15 million dollars will be at a 3% interest rate for 12 months grace period, which means that they will not pay any interest or principal before the year is up. And I can tell you, I can tell you manufacturers in Dominica, that there is no way in the Caribbean they will get their 3% loan, ladies and gentlemen. This year, we're increasing the marketing budget for tourism, for destination marketing, from 8 million dollars to 12 million dollars. And all the hoteliers now, I was shocked, you know, because the hoteliers, like we said, they're not making money. They could talk about low occupancy. But I was shocked when I heard the hoteliers saying, "Boy, that year was good." Boy, 2017 so far, we happy. Because they have seen an historical increase in visitor arrivals, turnovers for the first quarter of this year, unparalleled any year before. And first my smile like that, my brother. Normally, when you meet the hoteliers, they complain about everything, including the hot sun. You understand? But the only thing they didn't do was to kiss me at meeting, I can tell you. And I'm, and I'm happy for them because the more rooms that are occupied in Dominica, the more jobs done for Dominica, more economic activity for Dominica and better for all of us in Dominica. So we have to work with them because we have to appreciate that they are investing in Dominica and they're making huge sacrifices, many of them, to create jobs for Dominica. So we recognize that we have to continue to increase the marketing budget. And if you look at the budgets we have presented, every year we seek to increase the marketing budget to ensure that we can make Dominica known and cause more people to come into Dominica. So we're committed to that. You will also hear us announcing a special program of financing for entrepreneurs. And what is, there's a very remarkable thing taking place in Dominica where you have a number of people who have gone out to study and who have come back, they have their jobs, but they have a small business, creating jobs for our people in Dominica. And you also have people who have allowed an idea to grow into a practical thing they're investing. And they need the technical and financial support to sustain them. So in addition to the small business assistance which we'll continue to give, we'll be announcing a special package of measures for entrepreneurs to build a culture and a spirit of entrepreneurship in Dominica. And we'll articulate this in a more detailed fashion when I deliver the budget address on behalf of the government and people of Dominica. We'll also be launching a special program in the area of human resource development to have more graduate degree holders in Dominica. Because what we have found with the government's revolution to access to tertiary education, we have seen a dramatic increase in the number of Dominicans with first degrees. But you need a second degree to really get the real further in-depth knowledge of your area of discipline. So we'll be launching a special program to target people who are interested in doing their master's degrees. But those master's degrees must fall within the national priority. So it's not what you want to study, but what the country needs that you must go and study. So we'll be making monies for that and it will be, it will be an ongoing program. There'll be application forms and we'll tell you more about the processes. So we will finance, we will finance that program. Another thing that I will announce in this year's budget. You see, some of us, we get scholarships, we get grants. Some of us get, we take loans. Some of us have a combination of those things to go and study. And some of us come back. You understand? Some come back and some don't. And let me tell you something. I do not have any difficulty with those who stay abroad and work and make a way of life for themselves and send back a little money for their grandmother and so forth. What I have problem is the people who take their grandmothers home, put it in the bank, get a loan and don't come back and poor granny lose her house. And sometimes they're the same people who are there talking on Facebook, you know? And I think that we have to find a way of rewarding those who come back to the service of the Commonwealth of Dominica. So I will be articulating a position on this in this year's budget. Because they go, they come back, they study, they want to build a home and so forth, but the student loan can be challenging, you know? Some of them have to pay as much as 1,600 dollars a month for their student loan. So we'll be looking at that to see what level of support we can provide to you. We'll also be launching a special program to train teachers, but specifically targeting the area of providing the skills to teachers to teach students with disabilities. I want there to be a revolution in the training of teachers to provide to people with special needs in Dominica. Because it is not because you have a special need you must be left out of the system. We have to ensure that because every child, because every child has an innate ability to learn and to do something. But we must have the knowledge and the skills to be able to draw this out of the child. And I must say in all fairness to teachers across Dominica, even those who do not have any training in special education, you can see that the school is trying with some programs, one program or the other, trying to ensure they provide for the young people, the children of Dominica. But we have to provide the skills and the educational knowledge to the teachers and we'll be announcing that in this year's budget. So to teachers who are interested in special education, get yourself ready. Because one of the things we may end up doing is to enter into an agreement with a university across the world. So we'll be So we'll be partnering with one university who can tailor programs for us and ensure that we can send all our teachers there over a period of time. So we'll be ensuring that that is done. We'll also be focusing, and if you realize, we are focusing heavily on training. Not that we're not training people. And I'll explain to you why I want to ensure that we have trained people in this country. We'll also be embarking over, over a major program of training people to acquire various skills in the technical vocational areas. And also hospitality. We need more carpenters in Dominica. We need more farmers in Dominica. How many of us in Dominica have a sink or toilet bowl that aren't working properly and we have to turn it off every time because we can't get a plumber to come do it for us? We need to have more electricians in Dominica. We need to have more masons in Dominica. And not only training you in an informal way, we will be training you in a formal manner. So at the end of the, of the training program, you would receive a certificate of completion. So that if tomorrow you have to travel in another country within Caricom to work, you have your skill certificate as a carpenter, a plumber, an electrician, a mason. So Dominica will not only be your area to, to seek a job, you have the whole Caricom because we can move freely under the Caricom system and the O E C S, um, um, union. So we have to prepare ourselves for this. I am particularly concerned, and when the government, we're particularly concerned about our hospitality services in Dominica, customer service. If we are building five-star hotels in Dominica, our service cannot be at two-star. And therefore, we have to take our people in the hospitality industry to a five-star service level to be able to provide services to our visitors who will come to our five-star hotels. Because if we do not address this, because we have seen an increase in the number of hotels being constructed, brand names, international names, we must prepare ourselves to take advantage of those jobs. Because if you are not, if you're in a five-star hotel and you're providing two-star service, one day will not employ you, but if by, if perchance they employ you, you will not stay there too long. And therefore, I want to prepare our people to take advantage of those jobs. It is, it is very difficult in Dominica, those of us who, who love plants, it is very difficult to get flowering plants in Dominica. I might give you six, but you, but you give us sixty, he can only give you six. And he'll, and he'll tell you, I just put some cuttings down. And when you watch down, he's going twenty bags he has. But there is money to be made. There is money to be made and the people who are involved in it have other jobs. You understand? I mean Desmond is one of the bigger fellows in Dominica. But even he will tell you that, I mean, you see Desmond every day, he's, he's, he's driving there, driving over there. He has to go up there, he has to go down there. He, he is unable to, to supply the demands. So we need to prepare our people because the hotels will keep asking for plants. And do, do we want to import the plants from Miami and so forth? No. This is natural out of Dom, of the, of the world. We have the environment for plants. So we need to prepare ourselves, but our people must be trained. Because doing these things is not about just putting some sand and soil in a bag and putting a little cotton in there. There is a science to it. And we must know the science. So we'll be providing the training to our people in order to take advantage of those jobs. And we'll also be providing training to people to take advantage of the many senior management and middle management jobs in those establishments. So, prepare ourselves for the graduate program, degree program, the master's degree program for Dominica. Prepare ourselves for a focus determination by the government to train people in the technical vocational fields. And ensuring that we can provide you with the civic use that you require in order to take advantage of the jobs in the region. We'll also be seeing an, an one point six million dollars in the, in the budget to fully operationalize the abattoir. The abattoir is functioning. We are slaughtering birds, the chicken. We are slaughtering pigs. And I am saying to you, we are seeing more and more Dominicans buying the meat from the abattoir, and that is good. Because if in the first year or two, we can keep, even if it is half a million dollars into Dominica, that is half a million dollars which will go to the pig farmers in Dominica. That is half a million dollars that will go to the chicken farmers in Dominica. And that is five hundred thousand dollars less we'll have to send out of Dominica through foreign exchange. So, when people cry down the abattoir, that's matter for them, but for us in the government, we recognize that every job we can keep in Dominica is, is one less person who will be unemployed in Dominica. So let us understand this. So we want Dominicans to continue to support the abattoir. Let us take a decision at our homes to minimize on the use of imported chicken. When we, when I go to this market to buy pork, ask for the Dominica pork. And I don't, I no longer eat pork, but the Dominica pork is juicier than imported pork. The imported pork has no fat in it, no, go, nothing, there's no flavor in it. And you know, I mean, when I stew my pork, I want to go fat in it so that the fat itself can make the flavor. You hear what I'm saying? Jaisa, you can cook? You know? Why I, why, it, it look like Jaisa has, has his meals in, in four hours, he has not to cook? But you see, I, I, I know everything, you know? So don't test me. But, so we have to support the abattoir. Because you see, government can do all what government wants to do. We can build the abattoir, we can give farmers money to build their farms. We can slaughter the, the pigs and the birds at the abattoir. But if you and I Dominicans don't buy it, then it comes to not. So I know, because I buy the, the chicken from the abattoir. I know that it is a little more expensive than what we get. But my friends, the distance it has to travel from where it's coming to Dominica, and let me tell you something. This country sells the, 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 the question, the last cockerel pieces, you know? Is what they don't, don't want to send to us. So when we think we're eating good chicken and nice chicken and big legs and so on, is what they do not want. And what we send to you at, at the abattoir is what we want you to eat. That we all eat the same meat in Dominica. So I am saying to you, my dear brothers and sisters, let us support the abattoir because we are creating jobs for the people of Dominica. Agriculture is the same thing. We providing loans to farmers and I can say to you, dozens and dozens and dozens of farmers have contracted loans from the aid bank to invest in their farms. And what is very striking and very important and not worth, worth noting, and which is encouraging because what I'm seeing that there is an increasing number of professionals in Dominica, people who are working in the banks, people working in the private sector, people working in the government system, medical doctors, lawyers, who are contracting loans from the aid bank to invest in their farms, to create farms in Dominica. So, when the opposition is criticizing the government for putting those monies at the bank and saying that nobody's taking the loans, if I was, if I was Hector John, I would take a loan and go and do farming in Salisbury Heights. People are contracting those loans, people are taking those loans and creating jobs in Christian agriculture output. And that is good news for Dominica, my dear brothers and sisters. Because as we say, if it's one job we can create, that is one person less who is unemployed and who is able now to feed his family. Because for all of us, it is a sense of pride where we can bring the paycheck home and be able to take care of our families, we can go to your neighbor's shop and take credit. And that is why I find it extraordinarily difficult to understand when the opposition, day in, day out, criticizes the National Employment Program. When even in the United States of America, in United Kingdom, in almost every country in Caricom, they have such a program. So it is good for the goose and not good for the gander. And then when they go to other countries and they're saying, oh, we can tell us how, how great other economies are. But these countries are doing those things. That there are people who come back from universities and even if your degree doesn't mean that you are entitled to be employed by anybody, you still have to apply. And sometimes the people want experience and you do not yet have that experience. And they will not pay you to come to be trained on a job for three years, or two years, or one year. And what we're seeking to do is to provide an opportunity for the people who have gone out to study and who are back in Dominica, giving opportunity to demonstrate in a practical sense that which you have learned through authoritative means. And place you in a better position to take advantage of the jobs which are available, whether in Dominica or in the Caribbean. And what we have seen as a result of this is that we have been able to make graduates from university more attractive in terms of their CV. And some of them, many of them have graduated out of the National Employment Program and found permanent employment in either the business where they're working or somebody else, they apply for job and based on the interview, they get the job. And when we go to other countries and we see how beautifully landscaped the highways are, who we think are doing this job? Robots? People? So what is wrong, what is wrong in we as Dominicans beautifying our country? And why should the leader of the position, why should the United Workers Party let our people believe that there is something wrong about we keeping Dominica clean and beautiful? What is wrong in that? We send our, our Dominicans to Canada to pick fruits and to work on the farms? That's a means of employment. There's nothing wrong with that. So they, they're giving the people the impression that those of us who are engaged in, in cleaning and beautifying, we have problem to that. I can tell you, my friends, even as Prime Minister of the country, you come to my, to my village and you may see me on the roadside planting flowers or cleaning the road. Because I feel truly I have a responsibility to my community. But Mr. Linton believe that he, he, he's better by sitting in a radio station and talking a bunch of nonsense all night. And, and that's, I cannot stand, I mean, where in the world, my friends? Where in the world a leader always going to spend so much time on a radio like that? And, and I don't mind if he talking sense or he making sense. I mean, a bunch of nonsense, day in, day out, I mean, when you have so many, I mean, I mean, talk about the country, what you can do to make life better for people? Say to us, look, I went to that village and I met five families and the families had those concerns. How can the government help them? Nothing like this, you know? And I know, I know those of you in Newtown who voted for these fellows, I know you have, I know you have asked God. I know you have, you have asked, so, so I'm not, I am not even, I'm not even going back. I know for sure that whenever the elections are called, that you are going to return the Dominican Labour Party in Roswell. Because I was at a, before I leave, I was at a, I was at a, the village council inauguration this afternoon in Lubé. And Joshua Francis Galdemeu, my true soul Lubé. Well, I'm a worthy, who probably were pierced bitten. I told him that is, he hasn't started seeing me in Roswell constituency. And you see, this, 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 this piousness that Joshua Francis like to show and like to pretend and so forth. I mean, he came there and he tell you, okay, I, I can, I can represent people, I can do this and do that. Where is he? You see, where is he? He comes there, he comes there soft-spoken. Of course it's Trixie, Trixie. And I am, I am happy that the elections have not even been called and won't be called anytime soon, that you in Roswell have made up your minds that some of us, we made a mistake, we put the X by the wrong place because we're eyes of trouble loss. But but with the, with the Monsieur Milagro, with the eye care program, our eyes fixed now. So you have no excuse next time to not put the X by the correct box and the correct symbol. Because please no power, please, legal in, for Kube Kulu Dominique. Because I can tell you seriously, ladies and gentlemen, let me tell you something. Let me tell you something. Running, running this country is not easy task, eh? And I, I can say, I can say that the good Lord has been very good to us in Dominica. And it is he who we give the praises. Because when I reflect, when I reflect on what Erica did to us two years ago, two years ago, not even two years yet, eh? August, not even two years yet, next month, it'll be two years. But what Erica did to us and where we are now as a country, every single Dominican who calls himself a God-fearing person, whether he believes in Allah or, or whatever it is, must say that this government has done a remarkable job in keeping Dominica afloat and doing all what we have done and continue to do for the people of this country. Because we could have said to you, we can't help our students studying overseas, and you would understand. We could have said to you that we can't build no washrooms for you, and you would understand. We would say to you that we cannot provide any small business support and we granted over ten million dollars this year for small business, and you would understand. We could say to you that our roads can remain bad, and you would understand. But no, not to stand in Erica, my dear brothers and sisters of Dominica, we continue to reach out to families and We continue to reach out to families and individuals in Dominica to help make your lives better. Not one of our programs has been set aside because of Erica. Not one. We've added programs, both economic and social programs. I could have said to the hoteliers that I do not have fifteen million dollars to give you. I have to build retaining walls. I could have said to the farmers last year, we do not have ten million dollars to give you for small loans, for loans. I could say to the manufacturers that I do not have a thousand dollars, far more to fifteen million dollars to give you in the upcoming budget. We could say to entrepreneurs that we do not have money to give you, fight your way. But no, but no. We continue to do this. And when you look around the world, every single country is going through its challenges, my dear brothers and sisters. And I say to those who want to criticize Dominica, who want to give the impression that nothing is happening and everything bad in Dominica and the few of us who believe them, I'm saying to those of you who believe them, take a flight and go to any country in the world. And when you reach those countries, I guarantee you that you will see more challenges in those countries than we experience in here in Dominica. So let us understand this. And my final point, I see Don Legal in there. And there are some youngsters who have gotten partial scholarships to go and play football at universities. And though I have not met you, but I got your correspondence and we will be supporting those youngsters to get, to take advantage of the scholarships to go to universities in our sister America. And of course, with the advent of the construction of the indoor sports facility to provide for indoor basketball, netball and volleyball and also having an Olympic-sized swimming pool, that is a dream for young people and sports people in Dominica. And not to stand in Erica, not to stand in Erica, the Minister of Finance has set aside the money to construct this indoor sports facility which should be of an international standard to take sports in Dominica to the next level. My dear brothers and sisters, to you, sorry for being so long. But I want to thank you for the courtesy of listening to me. And I'm saying to you, ladies and gentlemen, that we shall continue to work with you to help improve your lives, improve the lives of your family and improve the well-being of our country. We have a country to build. Those of us who are positive, those of us who love Dominica, let us hold hands and let us put our hands to the plow and build our country. Those who do not love Dominica, those who want to curse Dominica and see darkness fall upon Dominica, those who are living overseas and will never be able to come back home and find the creature in Dominica, that is a matter for them. That is a matter for them. But we must always remember that the vast majority of us in Dominica will only have Dominica to call our home. And therefore, let us build Dominica to take it to the level that we all would like it to be in the next ten to fifteen years. God bless you. Thank you very much.